Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
For safety and security purposes, we, before I call the meeting to order, I'm gonna ask the gentleman with the chair in the aisle, if you just pull it forward just a little bit, just bring it forward just a tad, if you would, please sir, just for safety and security purposes. Thank you so much, thank you so much. Okay, at this time, it is approximately ten minutes after the hour of 6:00 PM, and today is Thursday, October the twenty-sixth, and we're here assembled at 901 Main Street in the heart of Old Town Conyers, we're calling our meeting to order. At this time, I will call for the approval of the agenda.
So, Mr. Chairman, I apologize to interrupt. I just wanna make sure that we have all the requests for the continuances tonight, and so there has been a request to continue the following applications until January twenty-fourth, or twenty, I'm sorry, twenty-fifth of 2024. That would be items that are covered under six A, six C, and six F. If you would like for me to read those out, I could read them out as well.
And before you, before you read them out, let me, let me do this, Executive Director Relich. I do notice that we have a number of our very fine citizens, our very fine citizens from Rockdale County who are quite respectful and they know the point of order. So, I'm gonna ask that while we are conducting the meeting, would you try your best to be respectful and let us hear, so that all of the people here can actually hear what's being said. She's gonna follow the order, so that we can have an equal and fair opportunity during this hearing tonight. So, I'm just asking folks to do what our grandparents told us to do, let's be respectful and be mindful, so that she can read. Executive Director Relich, would you move forward?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, so the items that have been requested to not be heard tonight, but to be heard in January 2024, would be item six A, this is for the Northwest Ebenezer and Zero Highway 138, future land use case number 2023-02, it's fifteen point five acres, and there's an adjoining rezoning case with that one, it's 2023-19. The request is to rezone fifteen point five acres parcel on Northwest Ebenezer and Zero Highway 138, so that would be the first items. The second items would be item six C, and that's sixteen eighty, seventeen hundred, and seventeen twenty Walker Road, that's a request for one hundred thirteen point ninety-eight acres by D.R. Horton, the rezoning case is 2023-10, this was to request to rezone from CRS to, I'm sorry, from agricultural residential to CRS. And then, the next item that was requested for a continuance to not be heard tonight, to be heard in January, would be item six F, and that's at forty-two fifty Southeast Highway 20, that is twelve point eight-eight acres by John Nix, and this is also a future land use case 2023-04, and a rezoning case 2023-15.
So, and thank you, Executive Director Relich, I'm gonna ask, because tonight, there's a lot of sensitive topics on the agenda tonight, I wanna make sure that everybody has an opportunity to hear and clearly understand, so I wanna ask you to take your time and read them again for me, please.
Sure, so that would be item six A, and that's the Northwest Ebenezer and Zero Highway 138, this is for a request to rezone fifteen point five acres, the rezoning case is 2023-19, it also has a future land use case 2023-02, those were the first items.
Okay, thank you.
And the second item would be six C, and that would be sixteen eighty, seventeen hundred, and seventeen twenty Walker Road, this is rezoning case 2023-10, it was a request to rezone one hundred and thirteen point ninety-eight acres from AR to CRS. And then, the last items were item six F, that would be, the location is forty-two fifty Southeast Highway 20, this is future land use case 2023-04, and a rezoning case 2023-15 to rezone twelve point eight-eight acres from AR to C2.
Well, thank you so much, thank you so much, alright, alright, with that being said, I'm gonna go back to the approval of the agenda at this time.
So, I move to amend the agenda as published by removing items six A, six C, and six F from tonight's public hearing agenda, and upon receipt of the request of the applicants and pursuant to Rockdale County Code, Section 238-43, I move to grant a continuance of the Board of Commissioners' public hearing on these items. Future land use case 2023-02, rezoning case 2023-19, rezoning case 2023-10, future land use case 2023-04, rezoning case 2023-15. Did I get that right?
That is correct.
Okay. Until January twenty-fifth, 2024, at 6:00 PM, and further move that the applicants will be responsible for the costs associated with re-advertising and posting the property to comply with the Code of Rockdale County, Georgia.
It has been properly motioned, I second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, let the record reflect that I second the motion. It has been properly motioned and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, okay, so that takes care of that one. Alright, now we'll move down.
To approval of the minutes.
Approval of the minutes.
Okay, I move to approve the minutes from, let me grab my list here.
October the third, please.
From October the third?
Yes.
Okay, 2023.
That's correct.
It has been motioned, so I second the approval of the minutes from October the third, 2023. It's been, it's been properly motioned and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, alright.
And now, we're on to the rules of the procedures for the public hearing, which we'll play.
Okay, thank you.
Each speaker must sign their name to the appropriate zoning case sheet and fill out a public comment card to register their intent to speak prior to the start of this meeting. Each item of business shall be handled in the order that it appears on the agenda, unless upon motion of the board, the order is changed. A member of the county planning staff will present each item to the board and will provide recommendations made by both the planning staff and the Conyers-Rockdale Planning Commission for each item of business. The zoning applicant or the agent will have ten minutes in which to make his or her presentation. Any portion of their ten minutes may be reserved for rebuttal following the opposition to the application. After the applicant's presentation, all registered speakers who wish to speak in favor of the application will then be heard. They will also be limited to a total of ten minutes. Once the applicant has made his or her presentation, and the speakers in favor of the application have been heard, the secretary will then call upon the registered speakers in opposition to the application. The opposition shall likewise be limited to a total of ten minutes. Once the public hearing portion is closed, no other speakers will be heard. As a reminder, speakers are to address the board and not the applicant or the audience, and are expected to conduct themselves in an appropriate manner. The use of abusive or profane language shall not be allowed, no debate or argument between speakers shall be permitted. After all public comments have been heard, the board may elect to hold general discussion. However, no decisions will be rendered at this hearing. Decisions will be made at the next regularly scheduled Board of Commissioners' meeting. Appeals shall be filed with the Clerk of Rockdale County Superior Court within thirty days after the final decision by the Board of Commissioners.
Okay. Are we done?
I think we're done now.
Alright, very good, so I'm gonna allow, I think there's still a little bit of transition in folks that want to exit, I'm gonna give just a moment, so that we can get into the meat of our business and meeting without too many distractions and eruptions. So, if you wish to leave or exit at this time, please feel free to do so. Chris.
Can I ask you all a question real quick? Okay. Did you see that there was no speaking, all of a sudden happened for the matter? Oh, today at all? Okay, so the motion is January twenty-fourth, gotcha. Okay, great, alright, thank you, I'm sorry.
There's plenty of room now.
Okay, alright, we're gonna call our meeting back to order, and I'm gonna remind everybody of the decorum that we're asking for, if you would hold down your extra talking at this time, so that we can make sure that everyone has an opportunity to hear what's happening in our meeting tonight. So, this time, we will go to old business.
That's correct.
And unfinished business.
Yes.
Deputy Director Wheeler.
Good evening, Commissioner, Madam Commissioner, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
The first item on your, oh, the first item on your old business is RZ case twenty-three dash zero four, pursuant to the provisions of the consent order, the Rockdale County Board of Commissioners will hear the rezoning case twenty-three dash zero four, the subject property is twenty-four oh five Salem Road, the applicant is Mr. John Nix, the applicant is seeking to rezone Salem Road Corridor Neighborhood Commercial District to Office Institutional for a commercial development. The applicant is here, if you have any questions.
Mr. Nix.
I told him I'd say one sentence, that didn't count. We just wanna get it some.
For the purpose of recording, Mr. Nix, sorry, they've done an excellent job upgrading our system, and we won't take advantage of using it.
John Nix, nine four five Bank Street, on behalf of the applicant, we simply want to get it to go back to the way it was, without any conditions, which would be O and I, that's our request, and we've discussed it with the county attorney, so, thank you.
No one signed up for that, and the next item, sir, is.
So, no one signed up in opposition?
No one signed up in opposition or to speak in favor as well.
Yes, sir, alright, so we move on to the next item.
Let me slow down really quick, there you go.
Alright, Commissioner Williams, any comments on the first item involving this?
No, I don't, I'm just distracted with all the movement and people still talking and coming in and out.
Well, they are adults, and I've asked kindly that they would use a level of respect, that's all I've asked, I've used that word a few times, I don't know what else, it's not classroom, so I can't call nobody's mama. Okay, alright, so if you all would, wanna make sure that the Commissioner can hear all, and sir, if you would not put your feet on the furniture, I'd really appreciate that, thank you. I wanna ask that you move forward, sir, thank you.
The next item, sir, is rezoning case twenty-three dash zero one, the applicant is Bloom, sorry, is Bloom and Campbell LLC, representing Mr. David Babato, the applicant is seeking to rezone, making a request to rezone from SRC-NC Salem Road Corridor Neighborhood Commercial District to SRC-MXD Salem Road Corridor Mixed Use Development. The applicant is seeking to go back to the planning commission, the applicant resubmitted a revised site plan with a few different changes to it, so the applicant is wanting to go back and forth with the planning commission and have, and try to get a recommend of approval, as well as have the staff take another look at it and see if they can recommend, recommend approval for the application as well. I did speak to the applicant earlier today, and he's, he is in agreement with going back to, to the planning commission.
Okay, alright.
And we did not have anybody sign up in opposition or support of this item as well.
Okay, Commissioner Williams, any questions regarding this item? Okay, alright, we'll keep it moving.
First item on the new business is SUP case twenty-three dash zero one, the applicant is Matt Tanaya S. John, applicant is requesting a special use permit for the installation of a two-hundred-foot above-ground monopole and telecommunications tower. Just a few points of, points of note for this application, again, the applicant is looking to install a two-hundred, two-hundred above-ground monopole-style communication tower addressed, to address gaps in the cell coverage, that location is twenty-four hundred Tucker Mill Road. The applicant has indicated that the distance between the, all the property lines will be two-hundred and five feet setback on each side of the structure, there will be a landscape buffer of ten feet wide, wide space reserved around the compound, and when they mean compound, they mean the actual telecommunication, telecommunications structure, where the tower would be located in the center of all the, I won't say bells and whistles, but other instruments to monitor the tower. The tower is designed to support up to four co-locations, so essentially, you have your core locations, if I'm speaking correctly, is, is different cell company towers where your cellphone can ping off and so forth, they interchange between Verizon, T-Mobile, and AT&amp;T, so you may have a tower that may be owned by T-Mobile, however, they may be able to, Verizon may be able to set up a co-location on that tower, so they can provide coverage. The tower will be shielded by existing trees and vegetation meeting surrounding the monopole, and the monopole will be fold as a pre-engineered point of completely contained within a hundred and seventy-foot-one radius of parent parcel to avoid structure failure and so forth. Planning commission did recommend denial of this application, their reasoning was, the reasoning for their denial is they believe the ongoing lease agreement between the property owner and the cell tower company was done in bad faith, so their reason for denial was that, staff did recommend approval of this application as well. I will let the applicant to kinda explain in more detail the situation between the property owners and the cell company, and applicant is here as well.
Alright, love your time, ma'am.
Good evening, I'm Matt Tanaya John, nine thirty-five Main Street, Suite C4, Safety Harbor, Florida, three four six nine five. I have Anthony Purnell with T-Mobile to answer any questions you may have about T-Mobile's RF need, as well as Harris B. Simpson, MAI, in case there's any questions about the property appraisal report letter that was submitted on the eleventh. I do have paper copies of the revised RF package showing census data that there's over one thousand two hundred people who live in the gap area, the property appraisal report, and as well as the site acquisition letter showing that Vertical Bridge researched the area before coming to this parcel. Just to get the big issue out of the way with the lease, Vertical Bridge entered into a lease with the previous property owner, either the property owner did not disclose it, or the buyer's title company did not see it, but it was recorded in the public for all the world to see, and unfortunately, there just hasn't been any communication from the property owners despite effort, despite months of effort. Moving forwards, please, moving forwards, this is an aerial of the parent parcel, you can see it's heavily wooded, moving forwards, please, and the arrow points to approximately where the tower would be, move forwards, forwards, please. Move forwards, forwards, please. And again. And one more time. Forwards, please. All right, so this is sheet C one point two. Uh, you heard from your staff that we meet the code required setbacks. We also exceed the spirit of your code in the actual separation to all the houses existing in the area. Next, please. And you can see that there. Next, please. Next. These are just the site plan and the elevation from the sheets, uh, that are on file. Next, please. Next. T-Mobile will be at the top. Next, please. And again. So this just shows the approximate location of T-Mobile's tower. Next, please. And this is the gap. The gap area is pretty big. It runs from Squire, uh, next, please, actually, I have it with an aerial overlay, and it'll help make things a little bit easier. Green areas is reliable service, yellow is reliable in vehicle, and white is missing service. Next, please. This is the gap overlay on your aerial. Next, please. You can see the existing towers they're trying to reach. Uh, they're all laid out there, and it's a question of physics. The signal just can't reach the gap area. Next, please. And the gap runs from Squire to the east to Scott Highway to the west, a little bit north of one thirty-eighth to the north, and a little bit south of Honey Creek to the south. So it's about two miles across. It's pretty big. Again, T-Mobile provides RF reports showing that there is, um, over a thousand two hundred people in the gap. Next, please. And then this is your zoning map showing the entire area is either agricultural or residential. I have no higher priority zones to retreat to. Also, you have in the record a letter showing that Vertical Bridge explored thirteen parcels that could theoretically meet your codes requirements, and they would all either require variances or have smaller setbacks. Um, I would remind you the Telecom Act from nineteen ninety-six, it preempts RF emissions. I do have, um, Mr. Purnell here to confirm that T-Mobile operates their system in compliance with the FCC safety regulations. I reserve any remaining time for rebuttal. Thank you so much, and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Counsel. All right, Depp, uh, first of all, let me check with Commissioner, Commissioner Williams, are there any questions for the applicant?
I just had one question. So in this gap that you're talking about, are you saying that people that live in that gap have no cell service from their homes, or?
Yes, so, um, the way that the gap is, is, um, you may be able to go outside and perhaps pick up a signal, but you can't pick up a signal in vehicle or in car. So, and that's very important because as we move into where we are using cellular signal instead of our primary lines, where we're using cellular signal to provide internet in our houses, where we're using cellular signal for the internet of things as our economy expands, and also as we do things like, um, Zoom to work and things like that, um, we have to be able to have reliable service here. Otherwise, I'd only have towers out by the highways like we were back in the nineties.
So does that impact the ability of fire and safety, nine-one-one, to pinpoint where emergencies are and get?
Absolutely, so, um, my apologies for jumping on your question. That is absolutely true. So cell phones are, the federal government, because they view this as a piece of our national infrastructure, require the cellular companies to provide E-nine-one-one location, which means that when you call nine-one-one, your phone essentially turns into an emergency beacon and helps them triangulate it. If you don't have, if your service is cutting out, they won't be able to do that. Worst-case scenario, you won't be able to connect to nine-one-one. And that doesn't even touch on AT&T. If they co-locate on here, this could also be a first net site, but at this point, um...
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, Counsel. Deputy Director Wheeler?
Uh, yes, sir, we did have people who signed up in opposition. Uh, the first person to speak in opposition is V. Russo.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, I'm in an opposition of the 5G tower, and I'm gonna tell you now. Our area, Rockdale, has all the 5G services that you really need. The only problem is, uh, T-Mobile is a little, has a little bit less service as anybody else. We do not have any problems with 5G services as it is. Now, to consider, if we are going to have 5G coming in, we have to focus on the health hazard that it will cause, such as health hazards to your skin, eyes, immune system, bacterial, bacteria antibiotic resistance, interference with oxygen in your lungs, depression, cancer, DNA damage. If you have a property anyplace nearby this tower that they are trying to build, consider taking twenty-five percent of your property value. If you wanna talk about 5G towers, especially the tall ones, your aircraft will have problems with, when, when the weather is really bad. And that's, we want nothing happen to our aircraft. Now, keep in mind, we are about thirty-five minutes away from the big airport in Atlanta. Now, when we talk about animals, we already know that if these are the health effects to humans, deer with very sensitive hearing, they will also have the same kind of problems, plus more. But the biggest concern that I have that should be notified and taken into a very important consideration is the fact that during, during the studies of two thousand eighteen, we have three hundred and seventy percent effect on honeybees. The person who doesn't know anything about honeybees, let me inform that person, we don't have honeybees, we don't have life. And that's a fact. Now, they have also made studies on, uh, 3G and 4G. Horrible effects for our birds. Two thousand sixteen and two thousand nineteen, they have made, made tests on the carbon emission test on aviation. Are you aware of the fact that internet causes more carbon emission on avi, carbon emission in the air than aviation? Now, 5G towers will dry up the trees around, around the neighborhood. Now, if their signal is not going through your yard or your yard, they will have the power to say that, hey, your tree's gonna come down. I would not like to have anybody touch my trees. Is this also gonna affect the farmland? Yes, it is. Now, in Rockdale altogether, and in the neighborhood of Rockdale, we have twenty-eight registered towers already. Some of the towers are not even being registered. They don't have to be registered. Now, let's look at why somebody from Florida would come over here into a little tiny city like ours. Well, our, our regulations are less than in the big cities. That's why they are piling up these big towers in all the big cities. Think, uh, in the, all those small cities, thinking that we don't know any better. We have a lot of knowledge in this room, I can tell you. Now, another thing I would like to, uh, point out. Now, let's say that you guys will agree that there is going to be the 5G tower. Number one question, how do you know that they will apply with 5G? How do you know that tomorrow there's not gonna be 10G? How, how do we know that? Do we have a machine for that? I don't think so. How do we know that they're not gonna suplease this tower to the military, AI, and et cetera? Before we have anything like this come to our neighborhood or any neighborhood, be very careful, extremely careful. This is not good for our health. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, who's next?
Uh, Ms. April Williams.
Come on up, Ms. Williams.
Good evening. Um, my name is April Williams. I live on, uh, twenty eleven, twenty-nine eleven Happy Hollow Drive. I'm so glad that my neighbor got up before me. I agree with everything that she just said. Um, they are bad for our health. I come from Philadelphia. They put towers all around. People were getting sick. I have a friend that worked on installing the towers. People were quitting because they were getting sick. The birds, they will be confused, they won't be able to find their way because of the frequencies. It's just like with the deer, uh, the dog whistles and all of that. We can't hear it, but they can. So those frequencies are gonna knock off the balance of the habitat. And we already have trees coming around everywhere. And just like she said, you know, once we approve one, and from my last, uh, meeting, she said this is a fifty-year contract. We can't call what fifty years is gonna bring because of AI, because of all of these other things. You approve this one, then the next thing you know, we got them all around. I moved from the city to the country for this reason, so that I can have clean air, nature, so that I can grow a vegetable garden and all of these things and be healthy. I see, I hear my family and my friends from Philadelphia. I talked to them on the phone. So I didn't move here to pay these taxes, to have to keep coming here to fight for justice for everybody that moved to a rural area instead of Atlanta, for us to have Atlanta come to us. And I don't think that that's fair to us as taxpayers, especially, I've only been here close to three years, and my taxes went up quadruple. I'm okay with paying the taxes as long as we're taken care of because of the way we're paying our taxes, instead of people coming from other states and coming in our backyard and doing what they wanna do because of money. I don't think that's fair, and I hope that y'all really approve and go with us because we're from here, we're paying the taxes. They're gonna go home, get their check, and go to sleep, and go to the next place. So I oppose this project and all the other ones that's trying to bring Atlanta to the rural area, to the country. We would've moved to Atlanta if we wanted Atlanta. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. All right, who else you have, Deputy Director?
Uh, Ms. Brandy New.
Ms. New, come on up.
My name is Brandy New, and I live at two four five six Tucker Mill Road, which is only four houses down from the property. Um, and I wanted to ask first, is there a way to ask a question to the lawyer?
Um, well, not at this time, no, ma'am.
Oh, okay. So we'll pass that. Um, I, I am one of those people that have T-Mobile. The service is shoddy, and I said this last week, I have problems everywhere I go, and I don't have a problem with it, if that makes any sense, probably not. Um, however, the, um, towers that they show are only two miles away. And the, the situation with the nine-one-one calls, the fire station is one mile, and less than one mile from the tower. So I don't know if that's gonna affect it more, affect it less, but the fire station is not that far away. Um, uh, I, I do want y'all to consider denying this based off your own Rockdale law. In the application, the original application and all those things, it says to not put a tower in a residential area whenever possible. I'm sure there's somewhere else that they can put the tower. And if so many people are complaining, maybe they need to work more on their service and less on putting the towers up that, again, affect our rural countryside or our health or, or whatever. Um, also, I have spoke before about the owners that own the property. They were not told by the agent, previous owner, or the closing attorney. And she said she has sent paperwork to y'all to try to do the right thing. They have been quiet, they have not fought it, they have not done anything but stay in their house and try to stay away from everything. But they said that they had mailed paperwork into y'all that you should have where you see basically the proof of the fact that they didn't know anything about it when they bought the property. And last week, it was also stated that there's a Georgia law that this lease agreement is supposed to follow suit with the property when disclosed to the new owner. When it's not, hasn't been disclosed, it seems like it would make that Georgia law null and void, in my, my opinion. But again, y'all should've had some official paperwork directly from the owner. Um, as well, um, Ms. Washington was interested about the balloon test. The balloon test was done on the spur of the moment. My understanding and from my research, that was supposed to be a, a community-type thing where we would all be able to be present to see what, where the tower height is gonna be and what it looks like, and it was done at ten o'clock in the morning. And I don't, according to the owner, again, we don't even know they actually set foot on the property because all she seen was a truck sit across the street for twenty minutes. They went back and forth a few times, and then they were gone. Also, in the presentation from last week, there were photos that were showed that were not right. One photo shows, you know, like, uh, the skyline or the tree line or whatever, and it was said that here's the tower. Does that mean I have to stop?
I'll let you wrap up.
Okay, I'll wrap it up right here. It shows the tower and a few taller trees, and it is said that, look, the tower's the same height as the trees. These trees are not in that skyline. I live down the street, I know that. Secondly, there's a picture of my home showing, ta-da, the towers are not in the picture, except for the fact that was the front of my house. You would've had to turn around, walk out my front door to the east to see the tower because it's gonna be heavily visible for me, and I don't wanna look at it.
Ms. New, thank you.
So, thank you for your time.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Uh, we do have two more people to sign up and to speak in opposition.
Absolutely.
Okay. Uh, next person is Ms. Loretta McIntosh.
Ms. McIntosh, come on up.
So, Mr. Chairman, before the next speaker starts, I just wanted to remind you to make sure that we do the balance of time for each side.
That's, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Maybe ten more minutes on each side?
Yes.
Something like that.
I don't need that much.
Right, there's another speaker.
Come on up, ma'am.
I agree with everything they say. I live on Tucker Mill.
Yes, ma'am.
And, um, the first meeting, all the, they opposed. So I'm just praying that you two oppose it, and because it's not right. I agree with everything they said. And I bet you if you go in their neighborhood and their subdivision, they don't have a big tower they have to look at. So I'm just praying that you all would do the right thing.
Thank you for coming out tonight.
Uh, and the last person, sir, is Ms. Jeanetta McFarlane.
Ms. McFarlane, come on up, Ms. McFarlane.
He said my name real well, appreciate it. Um, I'm in agreement with what everybody said, and I just don't believe in good conscience, especially with legal issues that are pending with this property, that issues occurred before the current people brought this house, and it has not been resolved at good, with good conscience. I can't see you all approving this. This is wrong in every sense of the word. I understand making money, but you should not be allowed to make money on the current people's property that did not sign this agreement. We need to think about that. The, the second thing is twenty-eight registered towers already? Why do we need more? We have enough. Conyers is small, okay? We really need to think about what we're doing. We've done enough to damage Conyers as it is. We really have. The community have been out here in droves because of what is going on in Conyers. We come to you because you all are our commissioners. We want you to hear our voice and hear our cry. Enough is enough. They can go somewhere else. I bet you if you deny it, they'll go somewhere else, a more appropriate place, but not in our neighborhood, not in our front yard, in our backyards. Enough is enough, okay? Thanks a lot.
Thank you for coming out tonight.
Uh, that is everybody who signed up in opposition. The applicant does have time remaining, uh, I believe it was eighteen minutes for rebuttal.
Outstanding. Come on up, ma'am.
Good evening, Mattanaya John again. Uh, first, I'm going to have Anthony Purnell with T-Mobile come up. Mr. Purnell, please state your name and address for the record.
Anthony Purnell. Address is out down five-five Woolen Run, Smyrna, Georgia.
And do you work for T-Mobile?
Yes.
What is your position with T-Mobile?
RF engineer.
Are you familiar with the project at twenty-four hundred Tucker Mill Road in Rockdale County?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Can we please go to the previous slide? Can we go to slide twelve of my presentation? Uh, the next one down, please. Yes. So what is this map right here, Mr. Purnell?
So, yeah, this is the current coverage that we have in the area. Now, if you look at the proposed, the dotted, the black dotted line, that's where we do not have reliable coverage. That's one of the reasons why we designed. That's one of the reasons why we designed this site in this area.
Can you provide, could you cover this area from outside of this area? Or would it run into the same problem that the existing towers have?
Yeah, if we tried to serve this area outside, it would not provide coverage, reliable coverage for the constituents in this area.
Would it be fair if I said that coverage works like those recessed lights above the commissioners, where you have to spread them out?
That is correct.
Okay. If I were to move all those recessed lights to one end or move even one of them, I would create dark spots?
Correct.
Okay. Have you mo, is there any modifications you can make to your existing towers to close this gap in service?
Uh, no, no, I cannot.
And does T-Mobile operate its network in compliance with FCC regulations?
Yes, we do.
Thank you. All right. I also have Mr. Simpson available to dis, to discuss the property appraisal report that we provided. You have people who have said that they feel that there's a decrease in property value.
Mm-hmm.
Um, he is available for any questions that you may have, but he is prepared an analysis based on real world data from the Atlanta area. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Harris B. Simpson, I live at twenty-three sixty-eight Academy Court, Atlanta, Georgia, three oh three four five.
All right, and did you provide the letter dated October tenth, twenty-twenty-three from Greystone Valu, Valuation Services?
Yes.
Okay. And what was the conclusion of that letter?
Uh, do not believe this tower will have any impact on marketability or values of surrounding properties or homes.
How did you come to that conclusion?
We basically look for, um, existing towers that are close to residential where we can profile some data, and where we can interview some people, talk to some realtors. So, um...
And is this report based upon case studies in the Atlanta area?
Yes, uh, I think there's four different counties, uh, represented in my data. Mostly because Rockdale has done a good job of putting cell towers in commercial areas. But eventually you run out. And eventually you have situations like this where you have gaps in your coverage, and this has happened all around metro Atlanta. It's just ha, it hasn't happened a lot in Rockdale, but it's happened in most of the other counties.
And is your report prepared in accordance with the practices of your profession?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for, I'm sorry for making it seem like I'm rushing, I don't have a, I'm just trying to be respectful of time.
Not a problem at all. Commissioners, have any questions?
No, I don't. I need to think it all through first.
Understood. Um, if you have any questions that come up before I'm done, I'll bring them back up, please take a seat. All right, um, can we please go forwards in my slide? Forwards, forwards. Stop, go back. This is your zoning map. Go to the one that's immediately prior to that. Uh, I mean, sorry, immediately after that, slide fourteen. You can see an aerial that shows the gap, the, the, the search area where, uh, T-Mobile can place the tower and solve the gap. Go back one slide. This is the corresponding zoning, this is the corresponding zoning map. I would love to retreat to a commercial or industrial zone, there's just none in the area. And as Mr. Purnell stated, we can't serve from outside the area, it's just a question of physics. Uh, going forwards, uh, balloon test, that was performed in coordination with your staff, and they were actually there that day and took pictures, so we pre-cleared that with staff. Uh, we even had a Rockdale County Sheriff's Officer with us just to make sure that everything, uh, stayed kosher when they entered the land. Um, let's see, not disclose, I respectfully submit that we're here to contend with the zoning issue. We're not here to contend with RF emissions, that was preempted by federal law. Um, we're here asking whether this meets your code and whether there's a need for this. Um, but at the bottom line, when we're talking about the lease, it was recorded at the courthouse before, months prior to, um, the new buyers taking ownership of the property. So I don't know who dropped the ball there, whether it was the seller in hiding something, or whether it was the title company. But this was disclosed in accordance with Georgia law, and that's real property class one-on-one. Um, I would ask you that when you come back to, when you come back to make your decision, that you focus, or that you consider these three things. One, T-Mobile has a gap in service. Two, as you've seen from your own maps, I have nowhere else I can go. I've provided your maps, I've provided a property appraiser, I, um, I've provided the site acquisition letter showing that they did their homework in the area. And three, I meet the letter of your code and exceed the spirit of your code as shown in your expert staff's report. Um, and I am just trying to... One last remark I'd like to make, um, I, um, building a tower isn't about making money for carriers, it's about providing service. The easy solution is to just change out an antenna if they can. And I have projects from here to Miami, so I'm not sitting here trying to target cities. This is just our national infrastructure build-out. So, um, anyways, I and my team are available for any questions that you may have.
Commissioner Williams, any questions for the council?
No, I don't, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, um, Deputy Director Wheeler.
Yes, sir, the next item on the agenda is RZ case twenty-three dash one-four. Uh, the applicant is Mr. John, Nick, uh, John Andrew Nix. Uh, the applicant is seeking to rezone the subject property, um, subject, excuse me, su, uh, subject property southeast Flat Shoals Road, uh, from, uh, Salem Road Corridor, CIS, CID Civic Institutional District to SRC, um, stone cr, uh, no, sorry, Salem Road Corridor Mixed Use Development, uh, for the development of, of a convenience stores of a gas station. Um, a few points of, uh, notes on this application. Again, the, the proposed C-store would be a total of five thousand four hundred square feet with fuel pumps. Uh, there will be a proposed retail and office store, uh, total of twelve thousand, uh, square hundred feet. Um, as you can see, there is, uh, several areas of green space. The applicant has indicated that there will be a green space and a fountain on the property. There is, uh, three points of access. Two points will be along, uh, Flat Shoals Road, and one point of access along Edwards Drive. Uh, there will be a five-foot land, uh, five-foot sidewalk along Flat Shoals and Edwards Drive, uh, that is a code requirement. Um, the applicant, uh, has indicated there will be, uh, ten-foot landscape shifts, uh, abutting of the property as well. Um, they indicate there will be two dumpsters, uh, to be shielded away from the, from the, from the public right-of-way. Um, and, duh, 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 and that is all of thing of note. Uh, Planning Commission did recommend approval, uh, along with staff recommendation approval as well. Uh, the applicant is here to present.
Good, all right. We'll hear from the applicant.
Can I borrow this tape?
Yes.
Good evening, John Nix, nine four five Bank Street. I'm here with David Track, who is the developer for this site. And I think the owner was going to be here, but I don't see him, um, yet. Um, this site, uh, they put a lot of work into the site. It's currently zoned, uh, office institutional, but the property to the rear. I think we submitted a map that shows the area in a larger frame, that looks at the tracks. But it's literally surrounded by a track that's already zoned, uh, the zoning that we're requesting, which is mixed use. Uh, across the street from our property, uh, is Edwards Drive. Uh, that's where the Tokyo restaurant used to be for so long. So that's a natural division going back towards Salem Road. Um, when the applicant came to me to engage us to handle this for them, um, when they said convenience store, I kind of threw up my hands. Um, but when they came to me with the ideas that they had about what this was going to look like, uh, you can see from these architectural renderings of the site that the, the, the pumps are located facing Edwards Drive away from Flat Shoals. The feeling here is to create a, a mixed use, really, the first mixed use development in the Salem Road Corridor that I'm aware of, that looks like a mixed use. Um, you see where they brought their commercial building all the way to the street instead of having parking in the front. Uh, planning staff suggested that they have their entrances to their commercial uses fronting the street. So they brought, so that's not the back of the building. That, that's an entrance into the building to this, from the street. If you look back, there's another photo that if we can go to another site, visual of this. Uh, that's looking back from the road going back towards Salem Road. You see how the pumps are orientated to the east, and the side of the convenience store is orientated to, toward the front of Flat Shoals. Again, it just gives a softer appearance of what they're trying to do, even though they do have a convenience store. The entire property to the rear, it's all this tree line that you're seeing. Um, we're looking as we develop this to accommodate connectivity to where that side, as it develops out as a mixed use, could make use of this fountain and green area, because it'll be very walkable. Um, y'all are aware, across the street on Flat Shoals is the new residential development with lots of green space and walkability. Uh, we're hoping this can provide a neighborhood kind of community area that can, is walkable for them as well. Of course, we'll have to do something about Flat Shoals, but I think if this is successful, um, that would be something that would happen. Because of the open space, you're going, you transition from a convenience store, you can go out to the rear, you're into a park area, you go to the commercial, and you see where, eh, the architect might be a little aggressive, but he's got outdoor seating there on that side. Um, but the fact that this is going to be developed this way gives that potential. Whereas if it was not developed this way, it's going to look just like everything else on Salem Road. Um, enough about my description. I'd like David to talk to you a little about his company and their background and their ability to pull this off.
Hey, good evening, uh, David Track with Lilani Ventures. Uh, we're an owner, operator, developer of real estate, um, based in downtown Atlanta. Most notably, uh, we're the current owners of Underground Atlanta and thirty-four Peach Street, which is a high-rise in downtown. Um, John did a better job of describing the development than I would, so I appreciate that. Um, I guess what I would say is what's important to us is design and quality. Um, I hope you see that reflected in the architecture, which I should say isn't fully developed. It'll, it'll improve from here, but also in the landscape design. Um, ultimately, we want to develop, own, and operate real estate that we're proud of and that, that the community can be proud of. Um, so happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Um, I will just add that, um, this plan that you're seeing and the site plan that was shown before, uh, was not an instant kind of evolution, and we did it one day. They, they came back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. Um, because I was pushing them a little bit too, because I, I was part of the Salem overlay, and I'm disappointed that it really hasn't evolved like it was envisioned twenty years ago. And they really have brought a product to the table that I think is part of that vision. Uh, they've got the background and the ability to pull it off. You also notice, and I didn't have to ask for this one, um, all of their stormwater is underground. They're not going to have ponds sitting out there with a fence around them and everything growing in it and the trash going in it. Everything's underground, um, which I think even makes it a better product. Um, we'll just reserve the rest of our time unless you have questions.
Commissioner Williams, any questions for the applicant?
I don't, thank you.
All right, all right, okay. Deputy Director Wheeler?
Uh, we did have one person to sign up in opposition, Ms. Charlotte Geller.
Okay, all right, come on up, Ms. Geller.
Thank you, good evening, Commissioners, Charlotte Geller, twenty-eight seventy-one Country Club Court, Fieldstone Subdivision, Fieldstone. One of the exits to, entrance exits to Fieldstone is on Flat Shoals Road, near Flat Shoals and Edwards, where this development what we're going, is going to be. Even this agenda only says, allow the construction of convenience store with gas. It doesn't say anything about retail and offices or fountain or green space. So when I first saw that, I, I went looking for more information. It wasn't on the website. Things used to be on the website, hyperlinks, so that you could go and do your own homework instead of having to call Planning and Development and dis, disturb them, interrupt them with getting their things done. And in case you haven't had a chance to read my email that I sent earlier today, um, it, along with the conditions that are on this development, please condition the case to build everything that's on the preliminary concept plan all in one phase, so that there'll be no bait and switch and just the convenience store with gas pumps be built as listed on this agenda. And I like, I hope it does improve Salem Road. I too have been on Salem Road a very long time since the charrettes for the widening of it. And I hope this could start bringing up the look of Salem Road and hope it doesn't turn into another strip center with nail shops, smoke shops, liquor stores, and dry cleaners. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else, Deputy Director Wheeler?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay, all right. Next item. We give, let them... Okay?
Uh, yes, sir, the next item on the agenda is rezoning case twenty-three dash eleven. Uh, the applicant is Mr. John, uh, John Andrew Nix. Uh, applicant is seeking to rezone the subject property, R, uh, with, R, from R-one to M-one, limited industrial, uh, along twenty-four seventy Flat Shoals Road. Uh, the applicant is seeking to, uh, to allow the property be, to use for the existing tree service business, uh, on the adjacent property. Uh, as you can see in the aerial photo, right, that I showed you, the star indicating, uh, this, the current property that's being used for the tree service business and, uh, property, the subject property that's before you this evening for the rezoning, uh, is the sub, the smaller, uh, property with the house on it. Uh, a few items to note, uh, they're looking, uh, they are going to use the, they're going to, in their application, I apologize, they're going to remove the existing residential structure. However, I was informed that somebody's actually living there right now. So I don't know if their plans are to actually remove the, uh, that residential structure at this point. However, the applicant can give more detail to that. Uh, their proposed setbacks exceed all the requirements of where the limited industrial, um, zoning, um, district requirement. Uh, so they all, so their submitted, their submitted site plan, uh, meets those thresholds. Uh, they will provide a six-foot-high privacy fence adjacent to the, adjacent single-family residential located to the west of the subject property. Uh, the Planning Commission did have, at the Planning Commission, there were concerns, uh, from residents about the driveway located along Flat Shoals Road. Uh, currently as it is right now, it's just kind of a dirt road. Uh, so again, the, uh, residents would like for that road to be paved all the way up to Flat Shoals Road to limit the, uh, debris into the street. Um, staff did recommend approval with conditions, as well as the Planning Commission did recommend approval with conditions as well.
Okay, all right.
Uh, John Nix, nine four five Bank Street, along with my sidekick, Mr. Walton. Um, we'd like to present this case to you, uh, very different from the one that I just described and presented. Um, if y'all could put the slide back up that shows the adjacent property and the, the acre that we're talking about. Um, this all came about because Above Tree to the site, the site to the right, um, was in operation, it's been in operation since twenty-eleven. Um, they purchased, uh, a year into their operation, the one-acre site to the left, which is the subject of this rezoning. Um, unfortunately, when they purchased it, they went ahead and moved their, part of their M-one operation right onto that acre. Um, they operated that way for nine years. And somehow, it came to the attention of code enforcement, an infraction totally unrelated. And based on that situation, it was discovered that they are operating improperly on land that was zoned, not for the use intended. So, uh, we're here to request your consideration of allowing the one acre adjacent to the existing M-one use, uh, to be... existing M1 use, uh, to be M1 so they can continue their operation, uh, on this site. Um, this company, uh, employs, uh, 20 employees regularly, year-round. Most of their work is in East Atlanta and down to the lakes, but when there are emergencies from storms, they gear up and go to those as well. Um, uh, let's see. Oh, as far as the residential use that's currently on, um, initially when we presented this, there's a shed there and this house, and it's tired, the house is tired, is what I told the planning commission, but people have been living in it. But the owner said, "Look, we'll take the shed down and the house down." What's developed, and I just found out about this yesterday, is that one of his recent hires as an employee, he found out he was living with his wife in a car and he let them, uh, about a month ago move into this house. So they have been working on it. I've been told, I have not walked the inside, that, um, despite its outside appearance, its habitable and functions of the house, and this couple's been working on it. So I told Christopher today, uh, I wanted him to be aware of it because we represented that it was gonna be taken down, and right now that is not our intention. Um, it, if this zoning is granted, that single-family residential will become a, a, a non-conforming use. Um, it's over, uh, 60 years old. Um, I doubt, he's not gonna be able to put back into it, of course, he can't, um, fix it. I guess he could maintain it, but that's not his intention, but he does want to retain it right now for this family. Um, they didn't put that as a condition that we take it down, but again, it would've been less than honest not to tell you that we're not planning to do that now. Um, I'd like for Mark to show you the site plan that we're proposing, uh, to accomplish this, and then we'll just reserve the rest of our time for any questions you might have.
On the thumb drive, would you put up the site plan, please? Uh, Commissioners, I'm Mark Walton with Patrick and Associates, this is Mr. Nix, the previously mentioned. And on this particular site, um, on the site plan there, um, sort of at the bottom of the page, that is Flatshoals Road, it's sort of cut off with orientation. Um, and that's fine, Carolina. Um, and then as we get onto the site there, we're proposing to have some landscaping, uh, to, uh, try to shield, um, just the big equipment that parks there in the evening. It comes, in the evening, it comes back to stay there, and then in the morning it leaves and goes, cuts trees all over, uh, East Metro. Um, behind the proposed landscaping, we're gonna have a privacy fence. The privacy fence will be equipped with a gate to hide everything at night. Um, on the left side of that drawing, which is the west side, there is a residentially-zoned piece of property. We're planning on having a buffer there. Uh, there are lots of large trees, and we're gonna add a privacy fence there just to prevent any sound that could go through the trees. Uh, and other than that, the rest of the site will be used as it currently is used, just to park equipment on.
When, when you drive Flatshoals Road and go back to, um, the street, I always forget which, what is that, Edwards that we were just talking about?
Yeah.
That goes to the access road?
Mm-hmm.
When you make that loop from this property, go down Edwards and then come back down across the front going toward Covington, um, all of that property in there is pretty much the same kind of use as this one. Um, it's intent, not intense, but it's at least M1 or heavy C2. Uh, all of it's very old, as far, it's been there a while. Um, this use actually matches the future land use map, um, as far as a use that would be permitted, uh, and the expansion would be consistent with that as far as the one acre. Um, when he gets through with it, he'll have an existing use that looks a lot better from Flatshoals Road than it does now. Um, and it's been there. This is not something we're bringing into the community. We've been here. Uh, we're just trying to fix something that we shouldn't have done because we shouldn't have been operating on that acre. We'll reserve the rest for questions.
Commissioner Williams, any questions for the applicant?
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, Director, Deputy Director Wheeler?
Chairman, I need a break.
Okay, we're gonna take a, uh, five-minute break and we'll be right back. Five minutes. All right, we'll call our meeting back to order and we're prepared to move on. We're in the home stretch now.
So we did have someone to speak up in opposition, uh, for that last application.
Okay, all right.
Uh, Ms., uh, Ms. Geller to sign up, Charlotte Geller.
Okay. Come on up, Ms. Geller.
Thank you again, Commissioners. I think when I filled out the card, I put the X in between support and opposition. Um, I sent you an email earlier today with some pictures. Um, the site is near the entrance to my Fieldstone subdivision on Fieldstone Drive, and I sent a picture of how close it was, and we've, we've dealt with it. They're a good company. Um, ju, most everybody that comes out of the subdivision turns left, you know, they don't turn right to go there. I've parked in their dirt before to go maintain the flowers at the entrance. Um, but it would improve the view now that, you know, they're gonna have some conditions to add a fence and some privacy and all that good stuff, that an additional condition besides the fence is the paved driveway from the street to the conditioned privacy fence. Um, because even on, on the drawing that's on the screen now, it shows it's, it's all dirt, all the way up to the street. Um, so, and that's, that might appeal to Commissioner Williams too, that there's a homeless, was homeless family lit, now living in the house. And I don't object to that any, either, 'cause hopefully now he's employed and he'll be able to move on and move out of that house at some point. So again, I'm not opposed or support. I'd just like, while they're improving it, to at least pave the, a driveway from the street that's now gotta have a curb and a gutter, and Flatshoals does not have any curbs and gutters at that point, and they have to put in a sidewalk, another sidewalk to nowhere, just like at Edwards Drive and Flatshoals Road on the two-lane road. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Geller, and I did read your emails, by the way. I saw the photo coming from your vehicle. Yes.
Did you want to speak?
I'd just like to go on the record that we would very much like not to have to build a sidewalk or a curb and gutter for that stretch of road. I understand from Mr. Walton, though, that it's a requirement under the code, and we'd much rather spend that money, uh, paving, uh, the driveway and, which is a new condition, but I understand it. I understand it. Uh, they did condition us at the planning commission to put gravel, make sure we had the gravel come all the way to Edwards, uh, but I get the paved driveway. But is there any way I can work out of not having to put that sidewalk in? I know they can't do it here.
Yeah, they're, sorry. Yeah, I, I mean, a variance or a waiver. Actually, I think, uh, the director of planning can grant the waiver on that. Um, it will be a very short sidewalk, uh, not leading anywhere, and the curb and gutter.
Well, let, let me just say this, gentlemen, I think, um, that part of the conversation, of course, you know, we're not gonna make a decision tonight, but I think with your robust relationship you have with the planning and development team, you might wanna, um, save that card to the right time to pull it.
We just thought we would continue to be robust. Um, thank you.
No, thank, thank you, thank the applicant, thank Ms. Geller. Um, this is, um, we'll certainly take it into consideration. Absolutely.
All right. Anybody else sign up to speak?
Uh, no, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay.
Next item.
Uh, next item is SUV case, SUP case 23-04. Uh, the subject property, uh, is, is 24, uh, 2314 Dogwood Drive. The applicant is Mr. John Andrew Nix, uh, representing Newell Recycling Southeast Center. Uh, the applicant is seeking a special use, uh, permit to expand and upgrade an existing recycling established facility. Uh, I wanted to kindly to briefly note that the applicant already has a special use permit, uh, for a recycling center. Uh, they are looking to come back and to, uh, to kinda do a clean sweep, uh, of their existing conditions because it has been operated not in, uh, very, uh, uh, efficient manner, uh, so that's why they're back before this boy, uh, to give another, you know, special use permit to kinda get it into, uh, into compliance and so forth. Uh, to just to kinda note a few things, uh, the vehicle access is limited to egress and e, ingress and egress from Dogwood Drive. Um, operations, uh, continue to be conducted Monday through Friday, uh, from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and Saturdays from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Um, the site is served by annual, uh, service at Septic Sewer, uh, a condition that the planning commission did recommend, um, that, uh, along with our 10, um, 10 conditions, uh, they recommend a quarterly report ge, given to the stormwater department related to water quality of their containment pond. Um, at, so staff did recommend approval and, uh, planning commission did recommend approval, uh, with 10 conditions and the added condition making a total of 11. Advocate is here.
Okay, well, let's hear from applicant.
Uh, John Nix, 945 Bank Street, along with Mr. Walton, and along with Pam Lewis, who is the manager of the site, uh, for Newell Recycling Southeast, who is a sub-entity owned by one of the largest metal recycling companies in the world. Um, they have 130 locations in the United States, literally stretching from the west coast where they're based in California, all the way to the east coast. Uh, they acquired this property back in 2007. When they acquired it, it was being used as a junkyard. Uh, they came in and got special use permits, uh, to do what they do, and primarily what they've been doing on-site is receiving cars. This is literally a distribution center. People bring cars in, they sell them, they crush them, according, and she'll describe you how they do it as far as the environmental issues. Those cars sit on this property for no more than seven days. They're picked up and taken to a central crusher, also run by this company, uh, that crushes the cars. Anything that's liquid in the car that you can think of, coolant, gas, oil, et cetera, comes out of those cars, goes in a double-lined steel drum or tank, and it's hauled off every week to be disposed of appropriately. Uh, you'll get a little bit more sense of, this is a California company, when you hear what Mark's got to say about the site, uh, and the environmental. Then I'm gonna let Ms. Lewis, who's the strong part of our group, close for us, okay? So Mark, if you'll go ahead and describe the site, and?
You're batting cleanup. Um, basically the site, um, Caroline, if you would go to the next?
Those extras?
Yeah, those are the little site plans.
Wait a second. Is it, the way it had to shrink, it was a big plan? You thought I would go all up at these and be used?
Yeah. And, uh, this right here that we're starting with, um, up on the screen is one of the, uh, reports that is done. They have a environmental firm that comes and takes samples. Um, the site drains basically to the east. When, uh, all of the area where cars are processed, all drain to this area. There's a, a clarifier, and we'll show some pictures of that, but it goes through several chambers in this clarifier, uh, removing the oils that might get away, removing grit. Um, and then by the time it gets out, on the far end of the clarifier, the water's purified. They take water samples there, and this is a result of the most recent water sample, and they met all of the EPA's requirements on, uh, evil chemicals. If you'll go to the next one, um, and you, yeah. This is a, a photograph of the first chamber of the clarifier where the stormwater goes in. It is a concrete-walled, uh, vault, and it has three chambers. The first chamber, you can see it's sort of scuzzy on top, that's where oils are collected. Um, the oils are later cleaned out of there, but from there, there's three little PVC pipes that have little elbows that go down, so the oil's at the top, and then the cleaner water is sucked, you know, through those little 90-degree bends, and it goes to the next chamber. If you'll pop the next one up there, um, and you can see in the picture, something, yeah, that, uh, keep going, please. Oh, wow. There you, that's the last little chamber, and you can see that the water is clear, there's a couple of leaves floating in there, but, um, and then if you go back to, that's the entrance, and there was a little pipe at the riprap, and you can see coming out, that's out of the outlet of the clarifier, and it's just going on to the riprap. There's no mud, there's no oil, no grit. Um, I don't know that I would drink it, but it's, according to the EPA, it is good and clean. Um, and that's basically the operation from the environmental standpoint. The last photo was the entrance, um, and basically you can't see anything. They've got nice landscaping up front, and you can leave it up there, and Ms. Pam can take over, or John?
Well, before she bats cleanup, I just wanna say one thing about this photo. One of the reasons that they're such a good neighbor, other than the fact that she runs a really clean operation, I invite you to go over there anytime and visit with her. It doesn't look like what you think it would. It doesn't look like what you think it would. The way this site rolls down to the back toward the railroad tracks, this entrance, you drive by it all day, unless you saw somebody going in and out, bringing a car, you wouldn't know what went on there at all. Their neighbors to the left and right don't ever complain to them as far as their operation. Several years ago, they did have an issue about the surface water discharge. Not that it was polluted, but it was coming across the back corner of their neighbor. They bought the property from the neighbor, and now it deposits, and what their detention facility is. As far as the environmental report that you saw spread up there, and the staff wanted that as a condition, or the Planning Commission did, it was no issue for her because that report has been done now by an environmental engineering firm for the last three or four years. They get a quarterly report, and it's not gonna be in... It's not something that we're being made to do, it's something we are already doing. And I want to stress that because it's the California connection to this company. Then it's also because of how she works on the site. So I'm gonna let her speak to that and call it a day. Remember to talk about the building and the Ferris.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Well, they did great. I taught them well, didn't I? My name's Pam, I'm the general manager there at Newell Recycling. What we're wanting to do now is expand our business. We want to buy all types of metal, not just cars. And that's something we haven't been able to do in the past. So we want to build some new buildings for our non-Ferris, which is your copper, aluminum, brass, all the types of things. We have customers, people that come in there every day, multiple people wanting to know, "Do you take your refrigerator?" "No, we don't," we send them down the road. So that's basically what we... We have a plan for some nice buildings and a warehouse, and some office buildings. Right now, we're in a single-wide little trailer that we've been in since 2010. So it's like living in a... Working in a tiny house. So that's what we're wanting to do, and wanting to, you know, make things very green and environmental for Rockdale County. So, do you have any questions?
Commissioner, any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Deputy Director?
We did have a couple cards for sign up in opposition. Mr. Chavo Sledge, or Michael Sledge. I guess not. Next person is Ms. Charlotte Geller.
All right.
This is a special use case... I'm sorry.
04.
She says she's got on that one, so we'll keep it moving, you know?
The last item on... Before this, on this agenda, is a text amendment case 23-06. This is a staff-initiated text amendment. Staff is looking to amend Section 202-6b2 of the Rockdale County ordinance to add CRS, Collaborative Residential Subdivision Zoning District, as a permitted zone within the medium-density residential future land use category. What staff is trying to do is trying to create a more consistent zoning ordinance. As you can see, right now, the county ordinance allows for all residential zoning districts to be built in medium density except for CRS. Planning Commission had some reservations or allowing CRS to be allowed to be built as a by-right use, not a by-right use, but as a permitted or preferred use in medium-density residential... Medium-density future land use category because they believe the developers took advantage of the CRS zoning category and to increase density. However, I think staff did a poor job explaining what is already allowed or what's a preferred zoning category that's already currently allowed in our ordinance. Right now, you can, if a developer owned a piece of property, or whomever, I'll just say a developer, owned a piece of property, and they decided they wanted to install, wanted to rezone it to RM. Currently, right now, RM is a preferred use in the medium-density category. If you go... If I go to the next slide, the medium RM allows for 12 units per acre, while CRS only allows for 3.14 units per acre. So without even changing anything right now, a person can come in and say, "I want to do 12 units per acre," and our zoning ordinance would say, "Yes, that is preferred use." Even if they did not want to do that, they wanted to do mixed residential units. Well, that's a mixture of townhomes and small lot homes. You can do up to eight units per acre. While in the CRS, it specifically says 3.4 units per acre as a maximum density. However, MRU and RM, again, those zoning categories are a preferred use in the medium-density. Again, those exceed what the medium-density... Medium-density requirement that the county had just passed. Right now, in the new ordinance, or the new comprehensive plan, we prefer medium-density between two to four units per acre. Right now, again, it says RM is 12 units per acre. So, again, staff is seeking not to make it easier for people, but we're trying to create a consistency across the board. We're trying to create a zoning category that would fall in line with an updated comprehensive plan. Previously, in the old comprehensive plan, it was one to two units per acre in the medium-density. And low-density was one unit per acre. I'm just gonna be honest with you, as a planner, that is not medium-density, that is low-density. Medium-density is between three to six units per acre. That is pretty much just a standard planning term across the board. Anywhere you go, medium-density is between three to six units per acre. Anything low-density would be one to two units per acre. So, again, at that point in time, if the county wanted to be classified as medium-density, they should really rename it to just low-density, and then everything else be rural residential, however. But at that point in time, I'm just kind of give a history of that point, sir. However, as we update our comprehensive plan, again, we have made it in more alignment with what the actual density names are called for, low-density, medium-density, and high-density as well. So, again, I understand where the Planning Commission's concerns are. And again, staff did agree to go back and take a look at the actual zoning category of CRS to see exactly what is the... What type of definition or developmental standards is kind of driving the push for CRS and so forth with our most recent zoning applications. And they also... I just wanted to also note, they also felt like if we... If this was approved, it would take their right to actually hear zoning applications brought before them, which, again, I understand. However, again, we are simply stating that we are trying to make it consistent across the board instead of having two applications when everything else that in our current ordinance allows for that, so.
Very good. Commissioner Williams, any questions from... For the Deputy Director?
No.
And we did have one person to sign up in opposition, Ms. Geller.
Okay, come on up, Ms. Geller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Chris did tell you why the Planning Commission recommended denial. They wanted it to go back to staff to get tweaked a little bit. Chris did, tonight, Chris did give me the layout that was on the... That's on the screen now, the new units per acre for the different zoning districts. But like I said, there's no future land use map on the website right now. I think there used to be. So that somebody could see if this gets approved, what areas in the county could be subject to CRS zoning. And again, that seems like what the developers want to do right now. I don't want to make it easy for them. If it takes two applications, let them make two applications. Yep, there used to be zoning maps and future land use maps on the county. A citizen, yeah, should be able to see what the impact of this text amendment is if it's approved. And then, just in general, more information is better than less. There's no... The minutes that y'all approved tonight from the previous BOC zoning public hearing, they're not out there. The agendas for your meetings all year, they're not on the website. The hyperlinks for the Planning Commission meetings used to be on the website. I don't think it would take that much cloud storage or server space to put that out there. And again, when they have questions right now, all they can do is bother the planning staff. So... Make sure that you understand, and I kind of halfway understood the way Chris explained it. I'm not a staff expert in the field. I don't believe either one of y'all are either. So, please let them explain it so that we can see exactly what the impact of making this across-the-board change would do, rather than doing it case by case. Thank you.
Ms. Geller, thank you so much, absolutely, thank you. Deputy Director, we have another...
She didn't sign up, but would you... She is...
Let me just respond to you first.
Yes, sir.
We try to follow the protocol. No, I want you to just hit me, I haven't made a decision yet, just hit me out. We try to follow the protocol, but we often break it. I'm breaking it, come on up.
Thank you, again, my name is April.
You'll be brief, I know.
Yes, I will, yes, I will.
You can pull that mic down, it's flexible, absolutely, there you go.
I stayed because, you know, like I said, you know, from Philadelphia, and everything goes over our head because we don't attend things like this, so that's why I'm staying, and I'm glad I did. But as my fellow neighbor said, as he was talking about the codes, I had called in to get something built for my son, and they said, "No." So if they start passing this, these codes and changing them up, again, we're gonna keep having these issues with these builders trying to come in and cram all these houses on just little plots of land. And, again, it's gonna change the whole raw area of everything. So that's all I want to say, is just please take it into consideration and keep it raw. Please, please. That's all, that's all.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you so much.
So Deputy Director Wheeler, just let me clarify. The CRS zoning would allow 3.14 buildings per acre.
Yes, ma'am.
But it's already... You can already build eight units per acre on there, and 12 units per acre. So this is really less than what's already...
Yes, ma'am.
Already approved.
Yes, ma'am, so, again, if, again, according to the ordinance right now, so if somebody wanted to do residential multifamily, again, according to our chart right now, that is a preferred zoning category in the medium-density future land use character area. So just from... Just remember, off the top of my head, that's the southern part of the Rockdale County, right? A lot of that is medium-density. So, again, if there's somebody who was intrigued about doing residential multifamily and the future land use category said medium-density, they can submit an application today, just hypothetically, and then they were doing 12 units per acre, and our category says, yes, that falls in line with our chart.
Okay, thank you.
All right. What else you have, sir?
That is all the items on the agenda, I have no reports at all.
So I do want to take this opportunity to say thank you to all of our residents that came out tonight. I also want to remind everyone that, of course, tonight, we will not be making a decision tonight. And this public hearing was an opportunity for us to weigh in and listen to all of the information that's been provided by both the applicants as well as the opposition per case. So the Commissioners and I will process the information and what date will be going forward.
November the 14th, 10:00 a.m.
November the 14th, all right. So are we clear of all business this evening? Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much, this meeting is adjourned.